Very, very loud, Drew. Said he's working on, that's a little better. I'm gonna deafen myself. All right, call the meeting to order.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Lucas.
Here.
Jared Giddens.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move straight into our proclamation. This meeting's proclamation is Small Business Saturday. We get asked every year to do this proclamation in support of small businesses in Nixa and across the country, so very happy to do that this evening. Whereas Saturday, November 26, 2022, is Small Business Saturday, a day to celebrate and support small businesses and all they do for our community. Whereas Small Business Saturdays, spending reaches an estimated $23.3 billion in 2021, and whereas customers and consumers who chose to shop at local small businesses directly and significantly contribute to the strength and vitality of Nixa's local economies and help support the continued economic growth and prosperity of our community. And whereas Nixa's community of small business owners are pivotal to the economic future as the drivers of innovation and job creation and represent every, the very essence of the American dream, as well as the time-honored ideals of hard work and individual responsibility. Whereas the city of Nixa supports our local businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy and are grateful to the small, locally-owned businesses for their generous contributions to the quality of life we enjoy. Whereas the city of Nixa encourages all citizens to support our nation's nearly 32 million independent businesses this Small Business Saturday and all holiday season long. Now, therefore, I, Brian Steele, Mayor for the city of Nixa, do proclaim the 26th day of November 2022 as Small Business Saturday. We have Mr. Russell on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. What else you got?
Mark's a small business owner.
Well, no, I didn't know there was going to be a picture of him. That's Darlene, she's an ambassador with the Chamber, she represents that a lot. Maybe you are the small business advocate in our community that you're out here fighting for them every single day. Mark Hartzok, you also have a small business in Nixa. It's very much in the vicinity. It would be very meaningful. And this, Mr. Sheel, has a small business.
I am not dressed for this.
Darlene, you have a question.
Technically, that's true.
Well, I didn't, okay. All right, so, a couple things. We are working on some things that do promote Small Business Saturday, but actually, it kind of starts on Black Friday and goes all the way through the end of the year. You're going to see some things on the Experience Nixa app where businesses are hopefully going to be decorating their businesses in Christmas decor or holiday decor, I think that's what the official term is, and setting up some selfie stations, and there's some prizes that we're working on. We're putting this together now. Businesses are currently getting registered for that to show that they are going to be in the competition, so that's going to help us drive additional traffic to our businesses, hopefully in a fun way, and the businesses participating, all they have to do is help provide a small prize. And this is not just for the retail and dining, this is for any business who wants to participate. And of course, we're asking for a donation for the prizes, like a $25 gift card, and we obviously want that to be from another Nixa business, of course. So, that's some of the things that we're doing, and of course, our model at the Nixa Chamber is always, what is it? Come on.
Be vocal or shout local.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Russell. We weren't as enthusiastic as we sometimes are on that chant today. All right. We will move on to our visitor's section. We do have a couple of visitors who had signed up, but I think they were for specific items that are on the agenda, so if you signed up to talk about something that's on tonight's agenda, you can just say "pass" when Becca calls your name and you can come and speak at that specific point when we're discussing that item.
Ron Sanders.
Good evening. My name's Ron Sanders. I live at 976 Glen Oaks Drive. Wanted to come and talk about the appropriate role of government in your community. There are a lot of things that governments can do. The government can, you know, create a lot of policies that can make people feel good. It can run a lot of things that, you know, maybe they shouldn't. Create businesses, get involved in commerce, but there is essential roles that if we are not doing properly, everything else kind of falls apart. And one of the most important roles, of course, is creating laws, creating ordinances, making sure that everybody has rules to follow, and that happens here. And I'm really grateful that we're very judicious in how we pass ordinances and what kind of rules we make. We could have arguments on how far we've gone into becoming an HOA-type city, where the city is being more like an HOA and everything like that, but that's more, how would you say it? That's more, you know, ideas. People want to be throwing out ideas and stepping on other people's toes, you know? Your neighbors want to be treated well, and if you're putting a bunch of junk in your yard, you're bringing down their property value, you're making their joy of life a little bit less. So, all that balances out whenever we have good discussions and everything. The second most important that I think a lot of people don't think about is an environment that is created by a community, by a city government, or by a township, and that environment is created where people can function. And one of the biggest parts of that private, excuse me, one of the biggest parts of that environment is the private business sector. And how far should the government get involved and get into the private business sector is always up for debate as well. But ultimately, setting up an environment where businesses can come and businesses can function without too much government interference is usually what businesses like the most. If we don't have a lot of ordinances that tell businesses how they should run their business, then they will thrive even more. And the other part of that is if we don't have a lot of taxes, then businesses usually like that environment more as well, because if people aren't paying high taxes, they're spending more money, and they will find lower tax areas to move to. Tonight, I just wanted to come and let you all know that right now, in the wake of the election and everything, everybody's got taxes on their minds, and I think that focusing back on the intent, creating that business environment, is more important, because if you create the environment, the businesses will come. The businesses will find us more inviting than anywhere else if they see that this is the most welcoming environment for the business. I think that Chris Russell does an awesome job with the Chamber of Commerce in facilitating that environment, but we have a lot of improvement to make, and unfortunately, you guys were elected to figure these things out. So, I'd like to say good luck on that, and at the same time, I hope that we do have the wisdom, or we find the wisdom, to make the best decisions possible to fine-tune this environment so that we start having a much more bustling economy here in the local area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I really, really wish that was the way the world worked. That is, I don't know, kind of, I don't, the reason the Chamber supported the tax initiative is that they understand businesses don't care, businesses don't care what the sales tax rate is, they don't pay that. The residents and the consumers pay that. They, businesses coming to a community are interested in incentives and infrastructure, things that require tax dollars to build, the things that you see in Republic, the things you see in Ozark, those are all almost fully funded by the city, the expansion of the, of roads, of streets, of utilities, of all of those types of things that then the business can use to reduce their costs and make it easier for them to come to a community. But, again, I wish that was the case. All right, we'll move on to our next person.
Victor Visio, you have down that you want to talk about an ordinance that's on the agenda. I can't let you talk about that ordinance during the visitor's section, but if you have something else that you want to talk about, as there will be a public hearing on that ordinance.
So, we're going to talk about the specific ordinance that you signed up for, we're going to talk about that, and you can talk at that time for that. If you have something else you want to talk about, you can talk about that. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
All right.
And Rick Brooks, same thing you have that you want to talk about, same thing? Okay. No more visitors.
All right. All right, we'll close the visitor's section and move on to our ordinances section.
You have a presentation tonight, Home Rule Charter presentation.
Oh, okay.
You jumped over it. I assumed you did that so that the presentation could come right before the first reading.
Oh, okay. It just wasn't on my, oh, I just missed it. Yep, you're right, it was. We'll go back to the presentation section and do our presentation from our Home Rule Charter Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Hartzok. I'm the current chairman for our Home Rule Charter Commission for this cycle of review, and I'm very happy to be here tonight with my co-chairman, Mr. Andrew Carl. So, thanks for giving us the opportunity to let you know where we've made it to with this so far. Okay, so, as you know, we in Nixa are a Home Rule Charter city, and if you take a look at the definition of terms, the charter for Nixa is defined as our local constitution, which defines the structure and organization of our municipal government. The Home Rule Charter refers to the legal process of governing. It means local rather than state control. The benefits of a Home Rule Charter are establishing a more flexible, efficient, and responsible government. Citizens have more control over local government decisions. Citizens will not need to rely on state legislature to grant the powers of authority in such areas as business license, initiatives, referendums, recall, and power in the event of natural disasters. We still comply with state and federal constitution.
And the question there on the slide is, what is the Home Rule Charter Review Commission? And a Home Rule Charter Commission is a creature of the charter itself, is a means to review the charter on a basis, and the basis is a mandatory review within the first 10 years of approval of the charter, which occurred in 2019, and then the additional review that we're taking on was in 2022, and the history, thanks, Mark.
Sorry, I jumped ahead there.
Sure, but that's great, you could go back to the history of the charter, because in 2010, Nixa citizens voted to become a home rule city, and in 2019, we had that first review, and in June of 2020, four amendments were approved, and the gist of those initial four amendments were a clarification of the city's organizational structure, allowing council to update personnel code using either a resolution or ordinance, ensuring the city published an annual budget summary report for public inspection, and also, the fourth proposition was updating the charter to ensure the city publishes a minimum 15-day notice to the public regarding upcoming hearings to discuss ordinances which would grant public franchises or privileges, even if newspapers in the area were to go out of business. And I go over that history of those previous four resolutions, because they're markedly different from the three that you'll hear tonight. And in April, or April 12th of 2022, the Second Home Rule Charter Review Commission convened, which Mark and I and our fellows who are in attendance were members of.
Thank you, Andrew. So, as he went through that review, again, it says that there must be a review at the minimum of every 10 years. This review is a little bit sooner, and there was some reasons for that that we'll get into here shortly. So, in this overview, we had three from each district, making a total of nine commissioners. Over this year since April, we have met 14 times. We've had five public hearings going over and allowing the public to speak on every single article, every single section. Some of them were very short, so we did group a few of them together. We had over 26 hours of review and discussion, so a lot of heartfelt dedication and time went into this. And through that review process, we have come up with three recommended ballot propositions for you this evening. Here you can see, this is a little slow to react, there we go, here you can see the commissioners that we actually had from each district. City staff also supported the commission by providing contextual and historical background information, research, as well as legal and public relations expertise. Kendall Dingus was the original co-chair, he was involved, and due to a relocation of his personal home in the process of the individual district zoning slightly changing because of the census, it meant that we would be off on our count for the correct district representation. So, at that time, we did have a replacement come in, Mr. Kevin Aubrey. So, both have been wonderful assets to our commission. The next step, so the city attorney has drafted a council bill, which if council passes, would place the following three recommended propositions on the April 23 ballot for all Nixa voters to decide. The charter would be amended if a simple majority of voters vote yes on these propositions. If any of these propositions fail, those amendments would not be made to the charter. So, a little bit of background on what we've come up with through our review process. If you take a look at Proposition 1 here, the background on Proposition 1 is that the current charter section for Article 3.7 allows city council to remove members of the council when they are charged with conduit constituting grounds of forfeiture of office. The model charter on which much of our charter is based also recommends that cities which choose to have a mayor who is not a member of council add language clarifying that the council also has the power to remove any elected official. So, the specifics of this modification or this recommendation are shown here under the Proposition 1 question. So, this could be potential language that could be set on a ballot should you order this ordinance. So, shall Section 3.7 of the Nixa City Charter be amended to set forth to grant the city council the power to remove elected officers from office when the officer has been charged with conduit constituting grounds of forfeiture of office? So, if there's any confusion about that, with that, this explanation will explain that a little bit better. The proposed update to Section 3.7 is intended to clarify that city council not only has the power to remove its own members of council when they are charged with conduct constituting grounds of forfeiture of office as defined in Section 3.6, but also that the city council has the power to remove the mayor, or a judge, or any other elected city official if the elected official is charged with such conduct.
The second proposition pertains largely to Article 6 Municipal Courts, and we'll cover it in the same background question and explanation format as the first one. So, the background, effective January 1, 2022, the Nixa Municipal Court was transferred to the District Court in Christian County as a result of changing state laws and interpretation of law from the state court's administrator. The charter is currently written in a way which mandates the establishment of a municipal court, but do not anticipate these changes at the state level and presents conflicting language which is made obsolete by the state of Missouri. The charter does not currently have clear language which would lay out a path for bringing a municipal court back under the administration of the city if and when this becomes possible, feasible, and advisable. So, basically, the way the charter is written is not in accord with the practice of the city, which has transferred municipal court to the county level. Next slide, please. Oh, Mark. So, the question here is, it's very multifaceted, because there are many elements of Article 6 which would be amended here, and the question is, shall Article 6 and Section 15.2 of the Nixa City Charter be amended as set forth to modify said provisions to account for changes in Missouri law regarding municipal courts by, one, modifying Article 6 to authorize the council to establish a municipal court or elect to have ordinance violations heard by a circuit court; two, require the council to review the decision to have a circuit judge hear ordinance violations every four years; three, authorize the position of an elected chief municipal judge, who shall be the presiding judge of the municipal court; four, allow for the council to establish elected associate judges; five, include incapacitation as grounds for vacancy in the office of municipal judge; six, authorize the council to appoint substitute judges to act in the absence or conflict of interest in a municipal judge; seven, provide an applicability clause for Section 6.2 of the charter; eight, remove Section 6.3 in its entirety; and nine, remove Section 15.2D in its entirety, which is the, 15.2 pertains to election of municipal judges. It's important to note that this question was recommended by unanimous vote amongst all commissioners to make these changes, which largely allow the council to bring the municipal court back should the council desire to do that in their judgment. And the last slide is the explanation. The proposed update to Article 6 and 15.2 is intended to align the city charter with changes to Missouri law regarding the operation of municipal courts and to allow the Nixa City Council the ability to potentially bring the municipal court back under the operation of the municipal government if and when deemed appropriate by the city council. It also forced the city council to reconsider this possibility at least every four years. The intent is also to allow the court, if returned, to have an elected chief judge and elected associate judges for incapacitation to be added as grounds for vacancy of such offices, for council to be able to appoint substitute judges in the case of absence or conflict of interest in a judge, and to remove the outdated Sections 6.2 and 15.2D, which may create conflict or confusion if and when a municipal court is reestablished as an operation of the city.
Thank you, Andrew. Jumped ahead there, it's a little bit of a delay on that one, sorry about that. That goes, okay. All right, so recommendations for Proposition 3. The background on this one, so it's currently listed as Section 10.3 of Article 10 outlines the requirements for petitions for initiatives, referendums, and recalls. Some city residents have expressed concern that it may be too easy to meet the requirements to force a recall in our city, which can cost the city substantial money for additional elections, even if a recall petition is motivated by unfounded claims or is supported by only a few dozen citizens, and therefore not at all likely to result in the actual removal of an elected official from office. Considering the fact that elected officials currently serve three-year terms, some residents express desire to make it more challenging to force a recall vote of an elected official during these terms, while not making it as challenging as such efforts can be in some of our surrounding communities. So, the suggested question to be added to the ballot here for Proposition 3, shall Section 10.3 of the Nixa City Charter be amended as set forth in the desired ordinance number to modify Section 10.3, subsection A, 3, to require recall positions to receive signatures from 10% of qualified voters registered to vote in the last election for such office instead of the current language, which says 10% of total votes cast for any given office in that election, and remove some unconstitutional language in Section 10.3, subsection C, regarding the voting and residency status of circulators. Again, as we mentioned before, this one had much debate, and the ultimate vote for this proposition, as it is currently worded, was an eight-to-one vote, so it was not unanimous. There was much topic on different methods and versions of accomplishing this goal. Recommendations for Proposition 3, the explanation, the proposed update to Section 10.3 is intended to raise the required number of signatures required to force a recall vote of any elected official in the Nixa municipal government by changing the benchmark number from 10% of total votes cast, as it's currently written, in the last election prior to the petition to recall, and modifying that to say 10% of qualified voters registered to vote in the last election prior to the petition to recall. The intent of the commissioners was to increase this threshold of signatures required to ensure that any recall effort to remove an elected official has at least 10% community support before forcing the city to hold a recall election. This would also be consistent with the existing requirements of the number of signatures required by the charter for a referendum petition, for example. However, the commissioners did not want to raise the threshold to the same levels found in other surrounding communities, which can be as high as 25% of all qualified voters. In fact, it's not mentioned on here, but our current state constitution would require that. So, if we were not a Home Rule Charter city, we would effectively be requiring a 25% of qualified voters, so still substantially easier in the city of Nixa. Some language would also be removed from Section 10.3, subsection C of the charter, as the current language limiting who may circulate petitions is no longer valid under recent court precedent. That is our presentation. I know there's a lot of facts and information there, so we are happy to entertain questions. We've spent a lot of time going through everything on our charter, so hopefully we can address them easily, but if there's something we can't answer tonight, we're happy to get that information for you.
It's like getting to ask questions to George Washington and Thomas Jefferson.
I don't have any questions, but I want to say thank you very much, Mr. Hartzok, Mr. Carl, and all the commissioners. I know you guys put a lot of time and effort in it. I wasn't at all the meetings, but I was at several of them just to kind of help learn some of the stuff that you guys were going through as well, and you guys really took your time, the passion, you guys really care about your city and what happens, and I really appreciate that. You guys really care about your city and what happens, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz, that means a lot, we appreciate it. It was great to see friendly faces there. Many of you did come to see what we were at. We had some great public debate sessions with the public in NIXA as well, so it was a great process, very happy and honored to help lead that command. Mr. Carl did a wonderful job stepping in after Kendall had to be removed from the office. All of our commissioners were great. In fact, they are all here again tonight, and I want to give them actually a round of applause because literally out of all of those meetings that we discussed, I think we had one meeting where we didn't have 100% attendance, so everybody really put in the effort, and as obviously, we are a volunteer group of commissioners, so thank you very much. If there's no other questions, we're happy to address any.
So, you said the Proposition 3 was an eight-to-one vote. Do you feel like you had enough discussion around the dissenting views and that you had enough dissenting views in the room to make an informed decision on that?
We did. When we spent probably more time on Article 10 than any other portion of the charter just because it is a very hotly debated topic recently. You know, when we got to the point where we had one opinion difference, it's noteworthy to mention that even at the previous meeting, the way that we asked it to be proposed, we were a unanimous vote. But people, as people do, go home, have a change of heart, think things through, think maybe I would do something different, and so that's the reason why we did have one vote that was different than that. Valid opinions, valid concerns, I can say that it really had to do more with specific percentages than it did the process. I think everybody unanimously agreed, if I can speak for the commissioners to say that we knew that there needed to be a change and that the question was exactly what that change would be. So, there was a lot of discussion about making it a very significantly high percentage, but keeping it votes cast, a significantly high percentage that I felt had the potential to make that almost unattainable in some instances. Likewise, there was some topic about making it possibly a lower percentage if we did make it, or suggest to make it a qualified voters only, which again can also create some issues. It's noteworthy to say that by making it 10% of qualified voters, it is in line with what a referendum is. It also puts us in line with the lowest possible qualified voter cities in the area, so yeah. Any other questions in regards?
One of the things we had discussed prior to reconvening the commission was the idea that, I know you and I, Nick, and Jimmy all agree that our home rule charter is a restrictive document, so it limits what the government can do. So, the city of NIXA can do everything that the state allows besides what the state doesn't allow, and can do anything except what the state doesn't allow and what the charter doesn't specifically allow. So, was that something that you discussed and you didn't bring forth any language to change that, so that's my question.
It's a good point, and it's one of those things that makes NIXA that much better. You know, being a home rule charter city, it does put more power in the public's eyes. It does give more limitations and the ability for the people to essentially help rule their city even more effectively and more simply than they could without it. So, it is a wonderful document, and following along with that same example, some of these suggestions tonight were more about changing times, things that have occurred, information that's come down from recent court happenings, things like that. So, the mention about how to change how the qualifications for a petitioner for that recall, for example, is written, that's something that will actually make it more simple for people to go out and get those petitions fulfilled, and so that's a terminology that needs to be changed to make that occur. Likewise, Article 3, what we talked about adding in the ability for council to have the ability to remove someone forfeited from office all the way to if we bring court back, that judge, that mayor position, it's not currently written that way. So, that does put a little bit more power in the ability to do things without having to have a recall. So, if someone has created a situation where they would need to be forfeited, that can be done by simple majority through councils, so important aspects of it as well.
So, as far as the ballot's concerned, will the verbiage that's in our memo be what's on the ballot?
We do have some sample ballot initiatives made up that I believe were provided to you guys.
Mike, sorry. Yeah, the way the ordinance is drafted, what council will be approving is the actual text amendments to the charter if approved by the voters, as well as each ballot that will be placed before the voters, similar to how we've handled prior questions to call elections.
So, I remember the last time that there was a review committee, there was an educational piece after everyone was done. Do you guys have a plan for education going forward between now and the election?
Yes, Councilman Giddens, that's exactly correct. So, the first step of this process is to show you what we recommend. Ultimately, you'll have a vote on if you like it as presented, or if you suggest any changes at that time, and you would set it to be a ballot initiative for April. At that time, we would have the means and the power to begin the education package for the public, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, very much, and thanks everyone on the commission.
Have a good evening.
Okay, now we'll move on to the ordinances. I thought they were going to just present as part of that, I guess.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2022-111, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA calling an election to be held on April 4, 2023, to submit to the qualified voters of the city several proposed amendments to the city charter, authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary and convenient to submit the proposed amendments to the qualified voters of the city, and providing for the enactment of said amendments if approved.
Jimmy.
Mayor, Council, I'll just do this one from here, so it'll be short and sweet. As the gentleman presented tonight, there's three propositions, and this ordinance does call for an election to happen on April 4 that would bring these propositions to the vote of the people. As I mentioned, staff has worked with the Home Rule Commission, and upon reviewing it, staff's recommendation is for council to consider approving that ordinance.
Any question? Mark, can I ask you one more question? Can you come up back and ask you one more? Did you guys discuss limiting the election ones to just the April municipal election that we already have? Is that something that you had discussed?
As opposed to having it a different time?
Right now, it's at any viable election, so it could be in August, it could be in November, it could be...
So, actually, the terminology says that it must be within a year from the time that we start, and so we did on purpose start in April?
No, not, I'm sorry, on Proposition 3, so changing the qualifications for a recall. So, one of the things people complained about was the cost. If we had, you could have a recall in the April election, there's no additional cost to the city because the city already has a ballot every April. So, I just didn't know that, kind of a random question.
So, cost was a possibility. There was always the topic of how cost impacts when we do, but it wasn't the driving factor for discussion, and the reason being is there is a cost associated with doing business. There is a cost associated with giving public the right, which is why when we went through the recall process last time, all requirements were met and it was justified and occurring. The primary discussion, the primary point of contention had more to do with the possibility of a low voter turnout or a high voter turnout. So, when you have a percentage of votes cast, and that's the only possible item in the charter that allows that, so it's not allowed for referendum, it's not allowed for initiative, those both have to be based on qualified voters. So, it's an interesting right, because when it's written that way and you have, if we were to change it, for example, to 30% of, I'm sorry, of votes cast, and then we have a record turnout for that election, it is feasibly unattainable at that point, right? I mean, if we had half of the entire group show up like we did for this recent sales tax initiative, and that was for elected office, you could potentially have to get 30% just for the petition, just for the petition. So, that's a tough call. When you start talking about making a change, the most responsible change that as a commission we could find was just simply leaving it as 10%, but suggesting that it becomes qualified voters. If there's a need for a recall, if it's already made it past every other reason, if it's not a forfeiture of office, if it's not a moral turpitude issue, and it's made it to the point that we need to have a discussion for a recall, we felt like that 10% of qualified voters made it a valid attempt. If you have 10% of the public supporting that petition, it has a likelihood of success, and if we're not doing it for success, why are we doing it? So, it was more about an effective attempt for a justifiable recall than it was the potential for expense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak to this item.
Good evening, my name's Ron Sanders. Yeah, I live here in NIXA. Yeah, I might have something to do with all of this coming up, right? Well, let's start the education now. First of all, they did an awesome job. Sean and I, we went there, I don't know if we saw very many other people show up. We had a lot of long discussions about a lot of the different parts. We even talked about at-large city council members. It was a pretty interesting discussion about the future of our city, having more council members, having, you know, more districts and stuff like that. It was pretty awesome. Proposition 1, I think it really does close a loophole. Proposition 2, we found out that city council members could be disqualified from their seat, but the mayor couldn't. It's kind of weird, you know, how we missed that one part where not all the elected officials could be, you know, forfeited from their seat, and how to trigger that forfeiture. It was there for the city council members, but not for the mayor. So, Proposition 2 fixes that. It basically says, okay, the mayor gets forfeited just like the city council members. Proposition 3, changing it from the number of voters, you know, votes that were cast to the number of qualified voters. This is a huge leap, though. So, Mr. Mayor, if this passes, you've got about 14,000 people voting for you, so it'll take 1,400 people on a petition just to start a recall, 1,400 people. So, you could, you know, not you, but a mayor, I'll just put it that way, a mayor could really step on the toes of maybe 1,000 people, really tick them off before he's in, he or she's in recall territory. You know, you'd really have to do some serious damage to people before they'd be mad enough to sign a petition. And remember, petitions are public, so if you put your name and address on there, it's out there for the whole world to see, so people stepping out to sign a petition, it's not an easy thing. You're putting yourself out there as a public individual, just like city council members and the mayor is. So, 1,400 people willing to do something like that, that's a pretty high bar. City council members, you guys don't have such a high bar. You average about 4,500 qualified voters. That's kind of the number that we threw around, so 450. So, you'd probably be able to really tick off about 400 people before you get into that I want to recall you mode, where you'd actually have enough people to sign a petition, which is a really big number. So, what it boils down to is you can get elected with 600 votes. You can get elected with, you know, 400 people showing up in the April elections and 250 of them voting you in, but you got to find 450 people just to sign a petition to get rid of you. And then on top of that, you know, you got to, of course, go to the polls and everything, which, Mr. Mayor, you did a phenomenal job, you know, pulling those votes. I mean, the only thing that I've seen higher was the turnout of this last election. But just so everybody knows, just so that we understand exactly what Proposition 3 does, is it pretty much removes that sort of Damocles away from your head, so that you have so much power that, not you, but people in a city council position could abuse that power to the point of about 400 people for a city council member and about 1,400 people for a mayor. And this leads to the ability of a government body being able to abuse the citizens. I know you guys wouldn't. I know all of y'all, I've been coming up here, and I know y'all would never do anything like that. But in the future, after this passes, you don't know who's coming in. You don't know who's going to get elected. When we're done and gone, this is still going to be there, and our children and our children's children are going to be here, and they're going to be living underneath these rules. And whether they have the power to deal with a corrupt body or not, all depends on this one little piece right here that says qualified voters instead of number of voters, a number of votes cast. So, everybody understand that that's what we're getting if Proposition 3 passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I'll reopen the public hearing. And close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All right, move on to the next one.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2022-112, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA renewing the base lease agreement for real estate in existing facilities with the Bank of New York Melton Trust Company, N.A., for refunding certificates of participation Series 2013.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is our annual ordinance that we have a bond covenant to pass appropriating the funds for the debt service payment and renewing the lease for the lease purchase agreement that is the financing for the Northwest Surilift Station. Let's see, the debt service payment that is included in the budget is $122,000, and the outstanding debt as of the end of this year is 200, outstanding balance is $290,000. If you have any, answer any questions you might have.
I'm sure I've asked this in the past, is this something that can be paid off early? That was something that was asked during the election because we had said that we couldn't start the construction of the police station had the initiative passed until 2026 or whenever this was paid off. Might not be this one, it might be the next one.
It's the next one.
Question still applies.
But, yes.
Do we have, are we restricted from paying this off?
We are restricted from paying it off early until it's callable. Typically, bonds aren't callable until like six months before they actually mature. I would have to look specifically, but...
So, within six months of, yeah, so 2025 at the earliest to begin with, okay. All right, that was the question I was asked. Any other questions? Thank you, Jennifer. We'll open up the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions? Move on to the next one.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2022-113, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA renewing the lease for facilities financed through the Public Building Corporation of NIXA Missouri.
This is the same type of situation, but for a different financing. This is the Public Building Corporation that we use to finance the renovations at City Hall and the Police Department, and as you said, we have outstanding balance as of the end of this year of $1,065,000. The debt service payment is $286,950, and it matures in August of '26, and again, can only be paid off if the bonds are callable.
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. I'm pretty sure I'd ask if, on everything that we could ever pay off, we already paid off. We'll open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Move on to the next one.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2022-114, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA rezoning the real property generally located at the 300 block of South Main Street from single-family R residential R1 district to a high-density multifamily R3 residential district.
Mayor, Council, good evening. This is for a rezon in the 300 block of South Market Street. The property is currently zoned R1 single-family. It is two lots, lots 1 and 2 of the James Brown Minor subdivision. In 2006, the property was rezoned from agricultural to R1 single-family, and it was also when the minor subdivision split the property into two lots. The property did feature, it's south, Drew. The property did feature a single-family home until August of this year, when a demolition permit was approved to demolish the structure. The property is a little further south, Drew.
All the way to the end of the road, Drew.
So, the surrounding land uses or the surrounding zoning for this property is agricultural to the east and to the south. to the east and to the south, and then R1 Single Family to the west and to the north. In the vicinity of this area is, again, agricultural, single-family, and multifamily land uses. So a change to R3 multifamily is consistent with the land uses in the area. All utilities are present for the property and of sufficient capacity to support multifamily development on these two lots. The property is bounded by two local roads, South Market Street and Lynn Street. Again, these are local roads. There'll be more on that in a second. The density for this property, for R3 multifamily, the density is 14.52 dwelling units per acre. Each of these lots is only .24 acres, so when you do the math, it comes out to just three dwelling units per lot, which is also the minimum of what an R3 zoning district can support. So they have to do some type of triplex on these when they do the, when it does come time for construction. At the Planning and Zoning Commission held November 7th, surrounding property owner did approach the commission to voice opposition to the rezon. The major concerns were South Market Street being a local road that is very narrow and is also seeing an increase in traffic due to the Highway 14 development, so there's a lot of people cutting through in that area. He also voiced concerns about our current building height, maximum building height for R3 zoning district, which is 35 feet. It's a valid concern because that is allowed in the R3 zoning district. He also voiced concerns about the condition of the property not being properly maintained by the current property owner. With all these things considered, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the city council. Staff also recommends approval, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions?
When you talk about high density, you're talking about apartments, duplexes, what?
The R3 multifamily is generally considered three dwelling units combined or more. So anything from a triplex to a full-blown apartment complex. But again, the size of the lot determines how many dwelling units can fit on each lot, so in this case, it would be a maximum of three.
So it can't be an apartment complex, it'll be a triplex.
But it can't be a duplex either, because it has to have three since it's R3.
Correct.
So it's definitely going to be a triplex.
Definitely a triplex, it'd be exactly a triplex.
In this case, it can't be less than three or more than three.
Be no more than three.
Okay, we got that under control. Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And we'll open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak to this item.
My name is Victor Vissio. I live at 308 South Market Street, Mayor, Council. I would like to try to keep that property, which I look at every single day, residential to a single family. It is, the increase in traffic with this really narrow road, people don't apply to the speed limit, which is 25. There's people that buzz down there 45 miles an hour. On top of that, with that single plot that is there, it would make a beautiful home, first off, and still have room for someone to have a yard instead of stacking people on top of each other. The main concern is, which we have documents, I do not personally, good friend Rick back there, which is most likely going to speak, has documented paperwork and pictures of countless times that that street has flooded. And if we slap a giant slab of concrete and asphalt there, it's just going to be even worse and worse and worse, and it's going to flood out probably five, six homes to just build a triplex. I think it'd just, in general, be better for the community. First off, it's a residential area. There's two duplexes, but they blend in very well. They look like houses. So even a duplex there would be fine, and that would still give people plenty of room to actually have a family, have a yard, you know, have a dog, instead of stacking people in there like sardines. And I don't know if anybody has personally driven around that corner. It's, I'd really like to see someone try to pull out of a driveway on that corner. That's, you're looking for fender benders and a lot of accidents. That is all I really need to say. And to tell you the truth, Rick Brooks, really good friend and neighbor, can give you guys some evidence on what I was speaking of. Other than that, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. And we'll reopen the public hearing if anyone else would like to speak to this item.
My name's Rick Brooks, and I've lived at 404 Lynn Street for the last 31 years. I can honestly say I probably know more about where the water goes over there than anybody. And I can tell you that with great confidence, that we've had a problem over there with stormwater runoff for several years. This can be confirmed by city officials, one of them, Mr. Cozy, you know, and Mr. Excuse me. Well, Mr. Cozy and I have had several conversations about this problem before in the past, and it's been a problem before. It's so much to a fact that in 2012, the city put up signs at each end of my property that states impassable during high water. So it's all been documented in court records and city dispatches where the actual street department's been dispatched out to put up road barriers on Lynn Street to keep traffic from going through there because of high water. And if you put a triplex buildings in there, it's going to greatly increase, excuse me, increase the square footage of roof space. It's going to greatly increase the square footage of impervious surfaces, because you're going to have to make room to park approximately 15 cars if you've got two triplexes there, which is going to eat up a lot of square footage, which right now is grass and dirt. It somewhat absorbs some of that stormwater that comes off of that hillside. And if you fill all that with impervious surface and roof surface, it's all going to run off. And where it's going to be directed to and runoff to is my property, which it'll cross my property on the front side, go down to Lynn Street, where that's where it'll start to back up onto the street. And also, there's a drain that carries that water from the street back to behind the houses at 403, 405, and 407. There's a sinkhole back there, which is where the water's been directed to, to alleviate the water off of the roadway. That fills up back there between groundwater and surface runoff. And the water backs up into the back of those, have those three houses there, has for years. And, you know, all those houses on there and the existing duplexes that are there were all built before planning and zoning was ever implemented in this city. So, you know, it's like, they got put in there before anybody could say, no, this ain't a good idea. Well, you know, we have to live with that. And now, we, you know, we live with the stormwater runoff problem. And by adding this extra square footage of roof space and impervious surfaces and the traffic, and just the general consensus of the whole neighborhood, which I've talked to, the majority of all of, they don't want a triplex situation in there. Single-family dwellings is what's supposed to be in there. That's what we'd love to see there. Right now, it's a big eyesore, so if, you know, if a guy could build a couple of high houses in there, that'd be great. But triplexes now, kind of not for the neighborhood. And everybody in the neighborhood agrees with me. And I wish they could all be here tonight, but due to having children to watch after and business to do, that they couldn't be here. But one of the other property owners back here, I don't know if he'll be allowed to speak because he wasn't here in time to sign up, but Tim Rika, he owns one of those three properties across the street from me. He's actually got pictures of what happens when the stormwater, when we have a big rain over there, and where the water backs up, and all that information. So I hope you'll take this information in hand and consider it when you decide if you're going to make this zoning change or not. But it's kind of been set in precedence with previous city officials that there's a problem here, and by making this change, it's just going to add to it. We really don't need that over there with all the other problems in the world today, you know, trying to keep our stuff from flooding out. And frankly, I can stand here and it's like, I've been in the middle of this since I owned that property 31 years ago. It's going to affect me on the backside and the front side. Because half of the water that's going to run off of that place is going to run to my barn, and it looks like it's going to run into a retention pond that is on the 10 acres that is right directly behind me, owned by Kevin Hankinson. And what happens is that water will run to that pond, and flow into my place. I've got an outbuilding at the, it'd be the southwest corner of my property, which is right adjacent to the 314 property. And I occasionally get water in the floor of my barn when there's a heavy rain. This place goes in up there and increases that runoff, it's, I'm going to have a bigger problem than I've got right now. And I don't really need that. I don't think any of my other neighbors want it either. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we'll reopen the public hearing if anyone else would like to speak to this item.
My name's Justin Montgomery. I live at 315 South Market, which is right across the street. I'm not going to be a dead horse. Everything they said is true. I mean, there's major flooding problems. The traffic is ridiculous. I mean, getting around that corner when somebody else is trying to get around at the same time, if you don't yield, you'll have, there will be an accident, you'll hit them. So I encourage you to go look at it, go around that corner, check out the roads on there because they're very narrow, and see if you think that more cars need to be put in that area. But, yeah, that's about it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Sir, did you say your name was Chelsea Montgomery?
Justin.
Justin.
My name is Timmy J. Rika Jr. I live at 403 East Lynn Street, Nixa, Missouri. I bought my house in 2009 and have seen what flooding can do. I happen to drive a four-wheel-drive truck, which makes getting in and out of my house easy. But when it touches the rockers of my truck getting in and out because of the flood, it's a problem. I drive a truck that's jacked up off the ground, and when it is touching the rockers, we have a problem. They've all said it, Nixa City knows it. I have pictures of the road signs they've put up. I have pictures of the barriers they put up when it floods. I also have pictures of what it does to my yard, my neighbor's yard, and the city street. And we have a lake. We have... This is the neighbor just directly to the east of my house. This is water backing up along the side of her house, which means her house underneath the crawl space is full of water. My house is the same way. This is a picture standing in my driveway, looking at Mr. Brooks's house. There's a lot of water there, folks, and it happens when it rains. I'm not an engineer and I'm not a geologist, but grass and dirt soaks up water. Asphalt and concrete do not. They're right. If you drive around there pulling a boat trailer coming in from the lake, and somebody's coming, if you're coming in from the south and come around the Market Street, someone's coming from the north to go south, you don't have room. I don't have a big boat, but it's big enough that it's a traffic problem. This is a picture, I have two pictures of my backyard when it floods. Problem is, when it floods, it doesn't go down in a day. It's a week or more, depending on the time of the year. Stagnant sitting water waiting on the sinkhole in the back of the property, the retention pond that's supposed to hold that water, backs up and it causes problems with bugs and mosquitoes and other issues. And then here's Nixa's way of fixing it, putting up signs to tell people not to drive through it. If you owned a car, just a standard car, you could not get in and out of my driveway, and you could not drive up and down the street when it rains. We have a problem now, and compounding it, making it worse, is not the solution. A single-family house might cost a little bit more, but that's different than six. Like I said, I'll give you these pictures, let you look at them. Sorry I wasn't more prepared. I wasn't planning on being here tonight because I didn't know what was tonight. I thought it was in two weeks. But as quick as I could get these, I got them and I got here, because it means something to the value of my property. Now, if you tell me that you guys will pay to fix my house when it floods and ruins my property, or if the developer will pay to fix my house when it ruins my property, more power to you. But if you guys aren't willing to do it and he's not willing to do it, I shouldn't have to foot that expense. Thank you for your time, and if you want these pictures, I'd be more than happy to leave them with you.
And we'll reopen the public hearing if anyone else would like to speak. And we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions? Scott, do you have any further information on the stormwater runoff issue?
Currently, code requires stormwater to run off either into an easement or into the public right-of-way, and I believe these roads are lined with open ditches for stormwater. Again, that doesn't necessarily fix any problems or anything like that, but that's just current code requirement.
Go back to the map, Drew. Or we can, can you scroll up just a little bit? Go north. There you go. Are we concerned about this being spot zoning since it would be the only multifamily in that region? It is close, there are some duplexes over there, but like they said, but there's not any high-density anywhere within two or three blocks of that area. It's just all single-family residential.
There is senior housing, that orange color is the high-density multifamily.
Oh, orange, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the tan is R4 zoning, which is duplexes.
I lived over there for like 16 years, so I know the flooding you guys are talking about. That pond gets really full.
All right, any other questions? We will, gentlemen, we will have another hearing on this in two weeks, and you're welcome to come back at that point. And we'll move on to the next one.
Council Bill Number 2022-115, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Amending Chapter 117, Article 4, Section 117-99, Removing Self-Storage Land Uses As Permitted From Commercial Districts.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Due to an influx in inquiries into self-storage land uses, the city staff has implemented an administrative delay on all applications for self-storage land uses approved by city council. It's effective until December 31st of this year. During that time, staff has proposed multiple options for city council. Based off your direction, we have proposed to eliminate self-storage land uses from our commercial zoning districts of neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and highway commercial, but still allow it in our industrial and manufacturing zoning of M1 and M2. The purpose for this is to preserve our commercial corridors for more of a retail, sales-tax-generating business or land use. With that, so this code amendment, it could be temporary or could change based off our current budget. We do have a comprehensive plan in the budget for next year. During that time, we can further the discussion on this to determine best location, best zoning practices for self-storage land uses. So again, this could potentially change along with our comprehensive plan discussion. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held November 7th of this month... Mr. Steve Oof approached the commission. He discussed a potential land sale that he, he has for, to a developer that is proposing self-storage land use on general commercial property in front of Tiffany Highlands. The commission attempted to try to create a, a sort of legal non-conforming use for his general property based off of a potential land sale that he already had in the works before staff started discussing this. Again, there was no application made to the city at this point, so there's no creation of legal non-conforming use that can be, can even happen there. So with that considered, the commission also expressed concerns about over-regulating commercial activity. And they also, two commissioners did state that the commercial zoning is adequate for self-storage land uses, and that's where they believe they should be. So again, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously opposed this code change. They did not recommend approval. Staff does recommend approval, so if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions?
So did they base their, how did Planning and Zoning base their decision? Was it just based off of?
Uh, they, they expressed concerns about over-regulating commercial development. Basically, they don't wanna pressure anybody to think that they can't develop here in the city. Is what I generally got from their discussion.
All right, thanks, Scott. We'll open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak to this item. Chris jumped up first. Do you want him to go first?
Chris Russell, Nixon Chamber. You know, I, I understand this language can be a little overbearing and it does sound like that, so I do appreciate where, what the commission is stating here on, on this. But you know, just like Mr. Sanders spoke about in the time, in the beginning of the night, you know, protecting and creating those environments that's inviting for businesses to want to come to Nixa. And when we look at our corridors, when we look at Highway fourteen, we look at that first entrance coming in from Ozark, or if we're looking at Highway, or even on Main Street, we've even had people propose and look at actually doing the studies and feasibility studies, whether they wanna put storage units right there next to Big Al's Subs. I mean, this is what we have to stop. We can't have that. I think there's adequate language out there that you guys can find, or staff, or somebody can find that's gonna take these storage units and put them in a location that, that, that when you pull into our community, that's not the very first thing you see. I mean, that's, that's not, I know we also need them. I know there's a very high, high need for storage units. And I, I know in the beginning you were talking about a distance from certain roads. I don't know if that's even feasible or not. But, but I hope that you continue to, to figure out a solution for this. I don't know that it needs to be every commercial zone, but it definitely, when we're looking at our main corridors in our communities, that, that we have people that are driving into each and every day, and that is the highest traffic count roads, that's, that is not the greatest location. We need to keep those lots open so that we have those available when the, when it's, when we finally, as Mr. Sanders was alluding to earlier about, you know, creating that environment that invites those businesses to come here, they can, they can sit there and look at those lots that are high-traffic areas and that are high-visibility areas, you know. In a meeting today, I was, at one-thirty this afternoon, that was all about visibility for a possibility of a national franchise coming into our community. And, and it's all about visibility. If we take those away with storage units, that's gonna hurt us even more for future development.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Go ahead.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Steve Oof. I reside at nine oh one East Timber Springs, Nixa, Missouri. Little history of my development experience, I've been in business forty-seven years. I've lived, five generations of my family lived, have lived in Nixa and reside in Nixa. I've developed probably around eight properties and I've put my money from my company back into this town and community. I developed Nixon Industrial Park. We have a nice storage facility there that went in there. All my lots are full of a hundred and twenty acres. When I planned, uh, Tiffany Highlands, I bought the property out there from the Hedges Best Estate, and I organized and planned the regional sewer system that serves all that side of town out there, all the way up to the park and all the way up there. All goes through the sewer system that I organized and planned and actually installed. When I laid out Tiffany Highlands, I did it as a upscale residential. So everything from the backside of Tiffany Highlands is all brick, nice, single-family homes. And then between there and my commercial in the front, I developed a row all the way across of patio homes to buffer the commercial from the more upscale, single-family. So I, the commercial in front has been ready for sale for fifteen years. I haven't sold anything. I had one that was almost closed, but then didn't. And so I've had this under contract for six months for this mini storage, and it'll be from Tiffany Highlands Boulevard to the east, over to the end of my property. So from the west of Tiffany Highlands Boulevard, I still have two commercial lots there that will stay either a convenience store or something of that sort. And then I have like almost thirty acres left of Highway fourteen developed that's own commercial. And then the property I annexed to the east, Dallas Trails, is multifamily in the back and all commercial in the front. So I've allowed for a lot of commercial development out there. The facility that the developer or buyer is proposing is very nice. I wouldn't have wanted it there if it wasn't nice. And I planned for whatever went in there under the zoning and I checked with the city, planning and zoning, months ago, that we were all legal with the zoning and they confirmed that it was. And then in the middle of the buyer spending has spent is what he tells me, close to eighty thousand dollars. All the test boring, the layout, the planning and all that, he's very upset. So I'm sure he'll be looking for some way if he doesn't get to build it, you know, as a, to get his money back. But, uh, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. O? No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O, if you don't mind, do you have?
Okay, go ahead.
Clarification, you said that the current plan is not to go to the west of Tiffany with this project? Did you say that the current plan is not to go to the west of Tiffany Boulevard?
I still didn't. I'm kinda hard to hear.
Was, was the current development not going to go to the west of Tiffany Boulevard? I think in the plans that got submitted to Planning and Zoning, it actually did, was in the lot on the other side too.
Come into Tiffany Boulevard off fourteen, the, to the west, I've got two lots right there on that corner. And then I have, uh, in Highway fourteen, I've built it too. Uh, I have a lot, that first lot there, and then the next two lots are sold. Then I have a corner lot and three on the back side of the street, and then behind that's twenty-one acres of commercial. So I've got a lot of commercial out there, you know, available.
I, I just wanted clarification because the original plans that were submitted to our utility locator showed buildings to the west for storage units, so I just tried to clarify that.
No, there's no, they're, they're buying everything to the east. It's eleven acres.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. O. And we'll leave open the public hearing if anyone else would like to speak. Mr. Sanders?
Mayor, members of council, my name's Jay Wen. I'm with CJW Transportation Consultants. I'm here on behalf of my client. He engaged us back in late June to develop construction drawings for this site. He has expended money, and he just asked me to come before you and humbly request and respectfully ask that you all consider exempting this property from the moratorium so that he could build it. He's a viable developer and he's ready to go. And he has spent money on this, this property, and that's all I have. And if you have any questions or if there's anything I can do to answer, I did provide some renderings that I'd be willing to show. It, it is a classy-looking, uh, storage unit. I'm not very good at, at, at renderings. The building's right and, but the lighting and some of the other things I'm not very good at. And I'll leave it at that, but I wanted to show you that it, it is a nice facility and something that he, he, he maintains and, and does a good job with. That's all I have, Mayor. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions?
This is, I have one, but it's more for Steve probably. Have you talked to any of the homeowners in Tiffany Highlands to see what their opinion is about something like this?
I did not hear you, I.
Has, has anyone talked to the homeowners in Tiffany Highlands to see what their opinion would be of having the storage units close to their homes?
Well, actually, as from what I understood, that they, 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 they don't mind having storage because they need it out there. That was, my, my, my client actually surveys and does studies of the area. He just don't plop storage units wherever he wants. He does a lot of research. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Ms. Sanders?
My name is Ron Sanders, back again. I, I think what we're talking about here is a, a vision of what we're gonna see in the future. And sometimes you have Planning and Zoning who has to be practical, battling with everybody else, you know, that may be making the decisions and actually have a vision of what things should look like in the future. Do we wanna see, um, do we, what do we wanna see when we first drive into town? Do we wanna see bustling, um, commercial areas where people are going in and out of restaurants, people are going in and out of small boutique stores? People are, are stopping in and stopping out to get their hair done or their dogs groomed and stuff like that? Or do we wanna see more industrial stuff? I, I, I've only been here for a few years, but, um, driving down through downtown, it, it's kind of disruptive to see the plastic manufacturer right there, right there in the middle of downtown. Really, do you want something like that in your downtown? It's been there forever, so it's gonna be a, a thing to Nixa. You know, it, it is what it is, and it is what makes Nixa happen. But moving forward, do we want, what do we wanna see from the streets? Do we wanna see diesel mechanic shops with a whole bunch of heavy equipment, you know, right out by the highway, all being repaired and stacked up to be repaired and everything? Or do we wanna see, uh, comprehensive, um, commercial areas where we have really nice stores, really nice restaurants, really nice, uh, commercial, commercialized stuff, you know? We wanna see those types of things when we're driving into town. It, it makes, it makes the town what the town is. And if we have a whole bunch of industrial stuff is the first thing that you see, it, it's gonna leave a mark forever. And like I said at the beginning, it's not just what we do now. We have to be thinking about the impact that what we do now has ten, twenty, and thirty years from now. And unfortunately, I, I would have to side with, you know, caution about putting things that many would consider an eyesore or inappropriate in, in a main area, you know, in a high-traffic area. Storage and stuff like that, industrial is relegated to lesser areas. Areas that aren't seen from the main highways, areas that aren't, you know, really noticeable. And that's where they function the best as well. So, uh, think about what we want our, our streets to look like. Think about what we want everybody to see when they drive into town and make that the vision, make that the, what we wanna see as, as we grow. And I think that's what everybody needs to have on their mind as they're making these decisions. What is the best use for these high-traffic areas, including the developers? The developers need to be thinking about this too. Because if they wanna put their business into our community, then they want, they should have what's best for the community in their mind as well, for that vision in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. And we'll leave open the public hearing. Last call and close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion?
I feel like this is one of those that is still stemming from COVID. Because what a lot of people don't realize is when COVID came along, our comprehensive plan got put on hold. And that would have identified where storage units and different businesses can be located. But we are working on that. So should have that soon.
Well, yeah, so the question before us is, do we penalize Mr. Oof and his developer that he already has? Like he said, he's had that property on for fifteen years, and nobody's built a nice restaurant or even a bank or a church. But somebody does want to develop something there, are we taking away his opportunity to use his land for a legally permitted use that he started long ago to maintain this corridor? Kind of comes back to me, I'm like, we've told lots and lots of people over the years who didn't want a triplex in their front yard, or didn't want an apartment complex in their front yard, or didn't want a new subdivision of single-family homes in their nice field in their backyard. That's too bad. They're following the permitted usage and doing what they're supposed to do. And if you want to save that field, buy it. So that was, Mr. O, if the city were to offer you the same amount that you have offered from this other developer, would you sell the land to the city and let them hold it in development for that purpose? Steve, do you hear me? Yes, I have a question for you, yes. Sorry. I thought I said it loud enough and you were shaking your head. I thought maybe you heard me. Uh, if, if, so if the ci, if the council were to determine that they did not want this, but that they do not believe it is within the authority of the city to deny you from doing it, would you take an offer from the city for the same amount that you took the offer from this other developer? If we say, we're not gonna allow this, but we're gonna, we're gonna pay you for it and you take it from you.
Sell it to the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So that, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not off, and that's not an offer. I'm not, I'm not a real estate agent or legally authorized to do such thing, but, but yes. We can have a handshake after the meeting, yes, no. But yes, so, yeah, so ignoring, the Planning and Zoning said that this is regulation we shouldn't make, even though staff still believes we should, and Mr. Russell and Mr. Sanders both believe we should as well. In my mind, if we're not willing to put up the money, Mr. Oof has invested, like you said, five generations and millions and millions of dollars in developing property in this community. And we're taking away his opportunity to, to profit from that, doing something that was completely and totally legal when he proposed to do it.
I have a question. What would be the possibility of you offering him a different piece of property? They wouldn't be right out there on the main highway that he could build those storage units on.
Okay, Steve, I'll come back up here. Okay, okay.
They looked the whole city over, and that's what they chose. And they're not interested in anything else.
You don't have anything that they would be interested in? You've got so much property, I would think you'd say, take this.
Yeah, I know, but I've got other commercial property coming on fourteen there, Dallas Trails, just down the road at Cheyenne Road. I also have forty acres over there at North Street and Cheyenne Road that's own commercial. If they, I know you guys are planning on widening the street out there on North and, and Cheyenne Road. And, you know, uh, that'll make that more feasible for commercials, so I have a lot, but you know, that's what they chose and that's what they want.
It's just a thought I think you can influence them for me.
Thank you, Mr. O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure that piece of property is much more expensive than some of the other ones, and so they must have had some reason they wanted that one.
I guess so.
Well, yeah, it's first time seeing come in town. So Scott, the non-conforming use questions, you said that Planning and Zoning had proposed that, but you said it wasn't possible?
Uh, correct.
So he changed this law, and then he still, and then he comes and asks to do it. Can you have a non-conforming use at that point in time?
Mayor, I'm just, just to clarify for the record, nothing has been applied for, so there is no legal non-conforming. There's no vested right in this current zoning. Zoning at this point is a le- Zoning at this point is a legislative act that the council has the authority to change when circumstances and situations arise that the council desires it to be. So, we are, the council is completely authorized to do this. Anybody who's invested any money in a zoning district at this point, hasn't actually turned dirt or made any kind of application towards the city, or acted upon the current zoning, doesn't have a vested right and hasn't lost anything at this point, other than what the current zoning is or may be. So, I just wanna clarify for the record, it's not, there was a comment made about, this is something that the city's not authorized to do, that's not legally, uh, that's not legally valid. The city is authorized to amend its zoning ordinances and legislate when it feels like it is in the public's interest to legislate.
Yeah. Sometimes legally and morally are not exactly...
Yeah. I understand, so if it's a...
So, so hypothet- hypothet- hypothetically, if a, if this, if this ordinance were to change and someone made a, a, uh, permit to build a storage unit in one of the areas that this ordinance would deny them from doing that, could a non-conforming use be applied for at that time by that hypothetical developer?
No, because they haven't made use of the current zoning as written. This is why we did the administrative delay, to give the public notice that we're potentially gonna be legislating in this area, which we are not required to do. You could've two months ago just amended the zoning and told everyone, "Well, that's the zoning."
So, if we release, release the delay and say that we are going to allow these rules to be created during the comprehensive plan process, then people, if we change the ordinance during the comprehensive plan process, then anything prior to that would be a non-conforming use?
Once you take safe harbor under the current zoning regulations, meaning you've actually, like, constructed in conformance with the current zoning regulations, that's when you require, acquire a vested right in the law. At this point, there's no vested right because nothing has happened.
Very confusing, right? So, when will the comprehensive plan be, can be, uh...
Uh, we plan on going out for RFPs January 1st or soon after, right after the 1st of the year. We just gotta wait for this budget to be approved and we'll get, we'll get it out.
Probably move that up. We approved it in a prior budget, didn't we?
Uh, we did not approve the $1 amount in the prior budget that we were looking at. We were looking at going with, potentially going with a private entity, which is, quite honestly, a little more expensive, but it's, it is an important plan for the city. So, we wanna make sure we do it right. Um, so, no, we did not, we do not currently have that amount budgeted that we do for the upcoming year.
Any further thoughts or discussions? All right, we'll see what happens in two weeks. I really thought I was gonna get to agree with you on that one, Ron. I thought you were gonna come out for private property rights there. It was gonna be, make me happy. All right, go ahead.
Resolution number 2022-111, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Ewing Signal Construction LLC for signal pole replacement at the intersection of Main Street and Aldersgate.
Mr. Cossin?
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Ewing Signal for the repair and replacement of a, of a signal pole on the southwest corner of Aldersgate and Main Street. This is resulting from a vehicle incident that occurred on August 29th. There was a semi-truck trailer that was delivering goods to Walmart that was heading southbound on Main Street, turning westbound on Aldersgate, and cut the corner a little too sharp and hit our utility pole. Fortunately, the, uh, incident was observed. The police were notified, who were then able to make contact with the, uh, semi-truck driver and obtained the insurance information necessary for the city to make a claim against that, that driver. Uh, the insurance company did negotiate and obtain estimates for the repair services needed. Uh, it was negotiated at $12,600. Those monies were received by the city. Ewing Signal is, uh, has agreed to honor the estimate that they did provide to the insurance company in the amount of $12,600, which again was the amount received. So, the city is requesting permission to enter into a contact with, contract with Ewing Signal to perform the needed repair work.
Any questions? Thank you, Travis.
No, thank you.
And we'll open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion?
Just add one kinda clarification, I guess, because the actual resolution states pole replacement at the intersection, but yet you're stating repair.
Sorry, sent down too quick.
Yes, it is repair because they're not replacing the entire signal, just the actual pole that holds the signal mast. So, it is a repair to the signal in that a component of the signal's being replaced, not the whole signal. So, the mast will remain and be reutilized on an, on a new pole.
Okay.
Thank you, Travis. Any other questions?
No.
All right.
No.
Thank you, Travis. Move on to the next one.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Oh, resolution?
It's a resolution.
Oh, I didn't see that. I forgot that one last time.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
So, it's a voice vote?
The new headings on the, on the, on the website thing messed me up, sorry. Uh, I have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, now I know where I'm at.
Resolution number 2022-112, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA, authorizing the city administrator to execute a sponsorship, sponsorship agreement with CC Links for the funding of playground equipment at McCauley Park.
Good evening. Uh, this is a, a sponsorship agreement with CC Links. Uh, they are sponsoring an element within the new McCauley Playground, uh, which, by the way, started today. So, uh, they, they're starting work today, so it was good. But, uh, they, they are, uh, proposing to sponsor the GT Wave, which will be the covered element, um, within the playground there at McCauley Park. Uh, this is just their sponsorship agreement that, uh, would authorize us to sign that NIXA reviewed. And, uh, in, uh, the end result, there will be $100,000 in sponsorship for the, for that piece of the playground.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And we will open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak to this item? Close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Uh, take a motion to approve?
So, may.
I made the motion.
Darlene wants to make a motion.
Second. Okay.
Seth's second.
Speak up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And move on to the next one.
Resolution number 2022-113, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA, amending the city's personnel code by modifying policy 6.1 to update the city's dress code policies.
Yes. Good evening. Um, I'm bringing forward, um, a policy for our dress code policy. We've not updated it in over probably five years, and I think we needed to take a look at it and make some changes. So, if you have read it, I'm here to answer any questions.
Amanda, do you wanna cover a couple of those policy changes specifically?
She goes, "You, you read it."
You should've read it, but yes, um, we're condensing it. So, what we had previously was probably three or four pages and every department had their own little dress code. And what we're technically doing now is putting everybody under one, here's what you can do and here's what you can't do. And then each department might or might not have a few modifications. Parks would have fitness wear that they could wear because they do fitness there and things like that. The biggest one would be, um, we will be allowing nose rings and gauges and blue jeans every day.
Yep, and then, and I'll just mention, uh, Mayor and Council, that this was also a result of a benefits, uh, survey that we did with our employees. We asked the employees, uh, if, if, what benefits would they like to see, uh, that, you know, some that may be not affordable and others that are. And this was one that they came up with multiple times in the survey that they would like to see changed. So, leadership took that to heart, uh, really looked at this policy and, and, uh, looking at opening it up a little more, so.
And if you read it, you know, I mean, we did, I do have measurements in there. And so, there are certain things that you are not allowed to do. So, if you do want a nose ring, you can only have, um, a small stud or a small hoop, one side or the other. You can't have a septum, you can't have chains, um, connecting your earrings or anything like that. Um, gauges have to be...
Be warning.
It's a thing.
Come on. I don't know. I don't see what's wrong.
Gauges are, can only be so big or anything like that. We're just trying to make it flexible.
I have a question on some wording. Either I'm reading it wrong or it's missing a word. It's in, uh, 6.1-2, non-uniform employees.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, "Generally staff should wear business attire, including denim jeans unless their specific job functions necessitate alternative attire."
Like police officers?
I know, but that just, it's confusing me. It says, "They should wear this, including denim, should wear business attire unless there's..." No, man, I got it now. That's why I said, "I'm missing something that, including denim jeans," kinda threw me off there. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, like if they're gonna go do a public speaking engagement or something, they're probably...
Dress like this?
Not gonna dress like that.
They should wear jeans like we do anyway.
Okay.
Yes.
You guys are the reason we put that in there.
I dress jeans. I dress nice.
Yeah. Wear nice jeans.
That's what I put in there. They, they, no holes, no rips, no crops. They have to be dark denim. So, I mean, we're trying to keep it whatever, but it's time to make a change.
The one thing, the one thing that I did see that I was gonna ask about was, we allowed, um, a lot of tattoos, but we specifically excluded the brand, brand, it's called branding or whatever, but the, like, a lot of people have, a lot of people do that now. Well, you start, yeah, you have, like, the branding, especially, um, depending on your skin tone, if some people, tattoos don't show, so they do the branding in, as a alternative to that?
If I can't see it, it doesn't matter. Yeah.
Well, it says, it specifically says, uh, branding is excluded.
You do have to read it in context, as long as it's not showing. It's just like any other thing. If, you can have any kinda tattoo you want, as long as it doesn't show. Branding, you can have it, but if it shows, don't do it.
Okay.
Keep your clothes on. Yeah.
Why do you keep looking at me?
Don't make me answer that. I'm joking. I'm joking. So, we're just trying to make it to where everybody feels included and they can have a little bit of changes. Um, it's just what's going on right now.
Any other questions?
I think you spelled it out real clearly.
Do what?
I think you spelled it out very clearly.
No, I had some help. We did a good job.
Very specific.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, we'll open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this item? And we'll close the public hearing. Who wants to be the grumpy old man? Come on, somebody. It really should be me, I guess, but, or Aaron. That is the way the world, world is these days. Any other questions or discussion? Motion to approve?
So, may. Second?
Sean. Mr. Peterson? Cause I was turning this way. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Resolution number 2022-114, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA, consenting to the mayor's appointment of Brian Popejoy and Matt Lander to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Hopefully, this is a less controversial topic.
You've been batting a thousand tonight.
Doing pretty good, right? Um, when, uh, Councilmember Ogden was appointed to City Council, um, in September, it left a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the mayor has appointed, uh, Mr. Brian Popejoy to fill that vacancy. Um, he will serve a term to, uh, November 1st of 2026, so, um, the term that, um, Councilmember Ogden was serving was set to expire. Um, this will also reappoint, uh, Mr. Matt Lander to the Planning and Zoning Commission. His term is also set to expire this month, so he will also serve a term to November 1st of 2026. Um, staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Concerns?
I think we will need a five-minute speech from Mr. Popejoy.
He had to get that the last time he came. Thank you, Scott.
Yes.
And we'll open up the public hearing. Anything bad about Brian? His wife, she can, kinda... Okay. We will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve?
So, may.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let her pick that one. All right, and move on to our debate discussion.
Were you wanting to swear in Brian now or after?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, yes. We'll swear you in right now. Make, make you start making decisions immediately.
Where we're going.
Since we're here.
Oh, okay. This is the first time.
Take a break. That's fine.
I'm gonna say, hi, Steve.
Just kinda helping.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Brad.
I'm Chris.
You're Solomon.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of NIXA.
And the ordinances of the City of NIXA.
I'm faithfully admitting myself.
I'm faithfully admitting myself.
In the office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
In the office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For which I was appointed.
For which I was appointed.
On the 14th of November, 2022.
On the 14th of November, 2022.
It's not really...
Hey, we didn't talk about Pam.
That's a, that's a different day, a different discussion. All right. Mr. Giddens left, so we will have a five-minute recess and then we'll come back and finish up the agenda.
In the office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For which I was appointed.
For which I was appointed.
On the 14th day of November, 2022.
On the 14th day of November, 2022.
Hey, we didn't talk about Pat.
That's a, that's a different day, a different discussion. All right. Mr. Giddens left, so we will have a five-minute recess and then we'll come back and finish up the agenda.
Information on the comprehensive plan. I know that we had, I know that you'd seen one that they had done and it mostly was decent except for missing a couple of bases.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I haven't heard back from, I made a phone call, I'm waiting to hear back. But we all review in the current, a couple of current plans, yeah, that was done recently.
Did Christian County get theirs?
Uh, Christian County's still working on theirs, but they're very close.
Thank you.
And just to recap as well, like we talked about with the personnel, there were five projects that were requested that are not funded in this budget. A sign on North 160, LED lighting upgrades, digital signboard, Christmas lights display, and the salt dome at the dog park. Those were all requested, but were not able to be funded in this budget.
In light of the current weather, where do we currently keep salt if there's picnic tables in the salt dome?
Where's our salt, Jeff?
Yeah. Getting wet right now?
Uh, currently, we're housing our salt at the 1010 Public Works Facility. We have a building large enough to hold roughly 400 ton of salt. So the, the intent of the salt dome that was placed for the current dog park is, was to lessen drive time. As the southern portion of the city developed, would be able to save man-hours and trips back and forth to, to get the salt, so.
Thank you.
Uh, there's no, no changes to the debt since the report given on the 24th. I did provide you with, and this is gonna be hard to see, so I did provide you, might be even harder to see on the sheet. But this is the list of the police leased vehicles. Um, the mayor asked to see a list of those. Uh, I will note that about three-quarters of the way down, you can see additional vehicle. Those were contingent on personnel additions, and so since we're not adding any personnel, that those can be removed. And I would direct any questions about this to Chief.
Yeah, I just asked kind of for the specifics of the vehicles, because usually we have a list of all the vehicles that are purchased, because they're all capital expenses. But since we're leasing them, that's operational now, which also affects our ratio, so.
Actually, it's, uh, those are included in the debt.
Oh, in the debt, in debt repayment, that's right.
But we're only leasing the new Tahos, right? We're not leasing the old Explorers or anything previous to that, are we?
No.
Yeah, only the.
Only the Tahos.
Tahos. The ones with the.
Ones with the check mark next to it.
One with the X's by them, yeah.
Right, so only the Tahos are leased.
Correct.
And Public Works has a list as well, but Travis has that, so if you have questions about that, he can address that.
Yes, and I apologize, sorry, Jimmy called me at four o'clock this afternoon, so I scrambled to get some information together for you, so I don't have a fancy sheet like Chief. Thanks for showing me up. Currently, we only have one of our vehicles that we were hoping to get in '21 that actually showed up, one of our three-quarter tons. So in inventory right now, we only have one. Overall, uh, in the budget, you'll see reflected 12. One for the wastewater department, which is the one we have received, is for a full 12 months. The remaining 11 are, we're projecting for nine months, as Enterprise has told us that in best-case scenario, we would receive them in second quarter. So we did put nine months' worth of lease rates in there. Those 11 vehicles include three half-ton pickups, six three-quarter-ton pickups, and two one-ton pickups. Um, one of them's for the wastewater department. We have six for the street department, two for the electric department, one for utility billing, and two for public works that is spread across multiple departments. And also, and then sorry, just to add, I apologize, there are some equipment that comes with a few of those trucks. We have $13,100 included in the budget for snowplows for the, um, three-quarter-ton pickups in the street department, as well as $13,900 for a flatbed for one of the one-ton pickups in the street department. And there is also $17,000 for a utility bed for one of the three-quarter tons in the electric department. In all cases, that's just specially equipment that does not come with the vehicles, but we have to outfit once they're received. Any questions?
I'm still trying to figure out how, how I like that to show, because we used to, we used to get a list, in prior years, we got a list where it was, this vehicle's replacing this vehicle, this replace, because they were, because they were all capital expenditures, so they had to individually be itemized. And now that we're doing them as a lease that's going into the debt payment, I don't want to lose that level of granularity that we've had in the past, so that we can say, yeah, we'll make sure that Chief isn't getting himself new cars, new Cadillacs every year for the, no.
He actually has on his, kind of broken out by year, when they're gonna be replaced.
Yeah, yeah, his is on a rotation, so that, that is a little bit easier to understand. But like the public utility ones, those aren't, those are just replacements for existing vehicles or add-on vehicles, right?
Right, as we get into the lease program, though, it's a four-year program, so every four years, it'll rotate out, and we take the equity that's built in them and roll it into the next round.
So you're saying we're getting 12 new vehicles for the utilities department this next year?
Yes, yes, the, the initial upfront impact was pretty severe because of the need that we had, especially in the street department. You, as you heard, the majority of the vehicles that are on the initial rotation are through the street department, just because of the need. The existing equipment is, um, in severe need of replacement. So, once that initial impact's over, then that four-year rotation kicks in and becomes a lot less onerous on a year-by-year basis. But until we get to that point, until we get through that initial impact of needing all these vehicles up front, we can't get into that rotation. So that's where it looks a little skewed on year one.
Is that like, is that like all, is that like a pretty much complete rotate-out? Or are we, are we still gonna have some that we're gonna be getting next year to replace the ones that we kept, that we were good enough to?
Yes, yes, no, that is not a complete rotation. We just, we just worked with Enterprise, oh, sorry, Jennifer, and we picked the, the worst of the worst, and the ones that we just could not wait. Unfortunately, we're waiting on top of the wait, we didn't want to wait, because these are all vehicles that we hoped to get in '22 that we, we did not receive because of supply chain issues. Now we're, they're talking about second quarter in, uh, '23, so we're already behind. But, but yes, no, it's not a complete replacement, it's just that those vehicles that we felt couldn't be, uh, couldn't wait any longer.
See, I don't think, I didn't have any question of the vehicles we were getting, it's just a document, documentation and transparency issue that I wanted to bring up to make sure that, used to see the entire list of all the vehicles we got, and then didn't see that this time.
Okay, any other questions about that?
Any other questions?
No changing in the transfers since the report that was given on October 24th. As far as the restricted reserve balances go, um, the beginning cash balances did not reflect the current year's transfer from ARPA to the general fund for the ERP and website projects, because I was waiting till all the bills got paid before we transfer that money. Um, so far, we, uh, those expenditures totaled $240,135.77. So I went ahead and adjusted the general fund beginning balances up, and the ARPA fund beginning balances down. That's reflected in that first column, which then affects the ending balance. So in conclusion, you'll notice that in the general fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $1,105,271, and the operations as a percentage of revenue is 98.59%. In the street fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $847,944, and operations as a percentage of revenue is 33.95%. In the electric fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $10,363,548, and the percentage is 87.3%. Water fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $1,582,339, and the percentage is 90.02%. And in the wastewater fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $1,994,651, and the percentage is 61.94%.
Any other questions?
If you have any other changes for me, then please let me know, because at the next meeting, the budget will be presented for first reading. So if this is how you want it to stand, if you don't, then I need to know before November 28th.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right, we'll move on to our other item. I had injected a, oh, uh, sure, we'll give it a try.
I won't remember it.
Okay. A, so this is a, not really a recap of the sales tax, we all know what happened there, so, um, but it is a list of things that I had discussed with Jimmy that I would like to propose, um, that we do as we move forward from this point. Um, so, let's see if I can make this happen. There we go, so, results of the vote was fairly close, about as close as all the other sales tax initiatives we've had in the past. I didn't put that in there, but, um, for the current, current year's budget, um, I think we established that based on not having these funds. Um, so we should be fine there. Do have a couple of specific items that I wanted to address as we go through here, so, um, we'll talk about those. But I don't think we need to make any mass changes unless there is specific things you want to remove. Um, like I said, we're paying, we're paying for most of the capital improvements with, um, specific reserve funds that we already had in place for that purpose. Um, so we can, I think we're okay to go ahead and do all of those. I did ask Nick to, uh, put together an ordinance, um, based off the use tax. So the current way we've been handling the use tax since it was passed is that all the money for that went to the, um, general, general revenue fund. And I think we'd always thought that we would get some additional, at some point, we'd get an additional, additional funds and we could do this, but probably just need to go ahead and do it now, and we had discussed it, that, so have an ordinance that says that the use tax will go to the initial tax that that use tax is based off of. So the use taxes, our use tax is one and a half percent, because we have a 1% general fund tax and a half cent transportation tax. So the half cent that was, that is based off of the transportation tax, in my mind, and in other discussions we've had, is that that should really go to the streets department, because that's there for sidewalks and streets and those improvements, because it's part of those funds, really. It's based off of that original, um, tax that was approved by the voters for that purpose, and so we should put the money where that purpose goes. There's no legal reason we have to do that, but I just, you know, believe that in the best interest of the community, the best interest of the voters and the taxpayers, is that that's what it was assigned, originally assigned for, and that's probably where it should go, so it would be up to us, it'd be up to you to make that decision.
The use tax, you're saying that the use tax was originally assigned to follow exactly what the general fund tax does?
Right, so the, the use tax is the exact amount of whatever the other underlying sales taxes are in the community. So if, if the tax initiative would have passed, the use tax would have gone up to two and a half percent as well.
Correct.
So it, it mimics whatever the underlying tax rates are.
Right. And so you think, you're saying that it should also mimic what the usages are?
What the usages for those, so if we get, in the future, if we get a police tax that passes, I think the use tax generated off of that increase in the use tax should also go to the police as well. Same thing with parks, we initiate a parks tax, or a capital improvement tax, or whatever other tax in the future happens to come up, that, that tax should then be aligned to whatever department, the use, the use tax increase would also be aligned to whatever that department was.
Understand, thank you.
And it will be a little tough, uh, currently, because it would require us to move about $200,000 out of the general fund, so that would take a little bit off, adjust us up about a percent and a half, which would take, or, yeah, about a percent and a half. I think that's what I had calculated. So it'll be a little over 100% on our operations ratio this year, um, based off of that, but it's the thing, it's the right thing to do. So, we can discuss that when the ordinance comes up, but that is one of the things I've asked, uh, staff to do. Um, the other thing is, I originally called this like community survey, but I changed it to community refocus, because I made all the rest of the slides that name, so. Um, asked, uh, staff to work on an online survey to focus on what element of city services the people in NICSa want to, the city to continue to provide to them. Um, so we've had three sales tax initiatives, they've all failed by a, a slim margin. Um, in our strategic planning, we continue to ask the community, what do they want? What, what would you like the city to do for you, without any limitation, uh, on, based on the resources we have available to them? So I think we should go out and ask, um, the community, what things do they want the, the city to focus on with the current funds available? So when we set, when we, when people say that they want an indoor pool, that's great, yes, we would all love to have an indoor pool, or a skate park, or, uh, more trails and sidewalks, or a new baseball fields at the Oaf, uh, Century Farm. Uh, we would love to have all those things, but we don't have the funds anytime in the next 20, 30, 40 years to be able to fund those projects. So we need to ask them specifically, what do they want us to do with the money we have today? And so I've asked Jimmy to work on that, no one has any drastic objections, I guess that they will go ahead and do that. Um, and so, kind of what I just said, it's impossible to construct an indoor pool, it's impossible to, uh, construct additional, additional passive parks, because a million dollars, I'm sure the Oaf Park, Matt has some idea in his head that's 10 or 15 or 20 million dollars, and it'd be impossible, we'd have to save for 20 years at our current, or more than that, I guess, 200 years, at our current savings, 200 years at our current savings rate, to be able to pay for that. Um, so it's not reasonable to let the commu, to continue to enforce on the community that these are possible things, when they are definitely not possible. Um, the other thing Chris left, but the other thing, um, economic development. We cannot invest in projects like Ozark and Republic do, where they pay for the majority of the infrastructure for new commercial developments that come in. We budget $75,000 a year for economic development in NICSa. It's impossible for us to do those things, and we shouldn't tell the public that we're trying to do those things or doing them when it's not possible. And so kind of just, to put some numbers to that, for 2023, our all-budgeted taxes, sales, property, use tax, everything for the general fund was $5.7 million. The police budget, personnel expenses and capital, was $5.4 million. That leaves us $300,000 to do everything else in the world, right? So, um, including parks, economic development, stormwater, everything else. We had three or four million dollars of budgeted things in our budget that meet, that are, those other things, where we only have $300,000, uh, available to us, really, to pay for them. We're paying, paying money that we've saved in the past, we're saving, we're using, spending that money for those things this year. And that we need to then focus specifically on required police funding. What can we do with the money we have now, and how can we maximize that money, um, to put officers on the road? That is our key, uh, the key element of what the city provides is police services. And so we should provide those to the best of our ability, uh, and focus all of our possible resources on that, um, along with the maintenance of existing parks and facilities. Um, we get a lot of, not, not to, not to detriment, uh, Matt, but we get a lot of things where people are complaining about the parks, because he has a hard time finding maintenance staff to be able to repair them or anything else. But we need to make that our key element that we're working on, that requires, you know, increasing salaries or doing something else to make that happen. We need to focus on maintaining what we currently have, and not on trying to add additional pro, projects that we would then have to maintain. And then the maintenance and expansions of our streets and utility infrastructure is required. People are gonna continue to move here, want to continue to develop, um, but I add this little tail in, that's not trails and sidewalks. Trails and sidewalks are a nice-to-have, and we can build sidewalks where the opportunity arises, um, within the construction of other subdivisions or other things, but the money, spending the money, we need so much, we need hundreds of millions of dollars of roadwork, and our $1.7 million streets budget isn't going to pay for that. So we should focus all the money we have on matching grants for the streets department to be able to build roads where we can build roads, and not worry so much on these kind of ancillary things that make our, make it a nice community, but that we don't have the money to pay for. Uh, future ballot initiatives, um, I am proposing, and we'll have a discussion on this at some point in time, um, but that we propose very specific initial, uh, ballot initiatives, um, that take, that take, um, utilize the specific initiatives that are available to us. So we have the ability to do a parks tax that would fund parks programs, um, that 700, $575,000 in parks programs, it would fund that. Actually, I think that's on another slide, we'll get that on the slide, but, um, so we have specific things that would, um, support economic development, support parks taxes, and so I think we should look at kind of all of those opportunities and be very specific about. Uh, that was one of the things I heard, I don't know if everybody else heard that, um, a lot during the tax initiative, but people were upset that it was a combined thing, and if it would have been half parks and half police, or three-quarters police, or whatever it needed to be for the math to work out, then they may have been more receptive of that. And so break it down, and then let the people decide, um, what things that they want to be able to have. Um, Jennifer's also working on a seven-year budget projection, um, that I think will be very useful to us to kind of see how those, um, lines and shortfalls come out in the future. So today, we kind of look one year to the next, or maybe two years out, and we have plans, capital improvement plans that are five years out, and but we really don't see how that affects the budget really completely in a kind of a holistic way. So I think that'll be a great thing, um, for us to look at as well. A communications plan, so, uh, comprehensive communication plans, um, related to any changes that we decide to make based off these things. So if we, we'll get to some of those things here in just a second, um, but a communications plan that will cover all of those, and then any future, um, tax measures we put out, again, very specific on what those are for. Um, we don't, I was talking to Jimmy about maybe have, having an ad hoc council committee that could look, or maybe that was Jared, I think that was Jared, um, to kind of look at that process and make sure that we're hitting all the right notes and, and get that moving forward as, as fast as possible. And then I want Jimmy and Matt to look at, uh, creating a plan, a parks reduction plan. So this is the number I had a second ago. So currently, the parks generate 1.135 million in revenue. Uh, we were hoping with the new sports complex, we could almost double that probably, um, but that's not gonna happen, so that's their current revenue. But, and we're budgeting 1.71 million in personnel and operating expenses. That leaves a difference of 575,000 that the taxpayers are funding. Um, so, again, taxpayers have shown that they are not, they don't want to support that at this point in time. Um, so I'd like to see a plan where we reduce that difference to somewhere around 300 to 350. That'd be 10% of the sales tax, it would be the difference currently between the police budget and the sales tax budget. Um, and that would leave us then another 200,000 that we could invest in, um, the police department for additional officers as needed as we move forward. Some possible steps that we had discussed for that are stopping recreation sports completely. Um, currently, that's a roughly break-even, but with the rec specs and maintenance and everything else of the fields, it's prob, we're losing money on that, I'm sure, or Matt will figure that out and tell us. Um, so if he tells me that we're making a profit on it, he, he always tells us that we're making a profit on the pool, so we're not gonna close down the pool, not close down, I'm gonna make a profit on, sounds good. Um, adjusting fees and program fees, um, you know, we all, the school has similar type programs, they're just twice as expensive, um, so it reduces the amount of people in the community that can access them. Um, but if we have to raise our fees to be able to even provide that program, even at a minimum, um, that's something we have to look at. And then, um, reduction of elements in the park that need maintenance, if there's anything. So next time the bathroom gets trashed, let's just level the bathroom, and not repair the bathroom over and over and over again. Um, and so same thing with the garden, if we can figure out a way to get rid of the garden at, at Rotary Park that people complain about, let's, I don't know what the things are, I'm just throwing out ideas. So, again, I think something, work through your liaison and try to figure out, let's see, put a plan in place that says, you know, these are the things that we have to do to be able to, to provide the officers on the street that we need, and if these, when these other things become a priority for the community, we can try to add them back. And same thing for the police, so a police services review, um, like I said, we haven't been able to add new officers for two years. We're getting farther and farther behind on that plan, we haven't slipped on the safest city list yet, but we probably will start doing that as well. Um, my words are a little small here, but I think I can read it. Um, so, create a plan to maximize officers on the street, um, and to meet our other needs within the current budget limitations that we have. So that, some things that have been discussed in the past are removing Darren Community Policing, including the Citizens Police Academy. All those have costs, you could put, for the Citizens Police Academy, I could put another tenth of an officer, or 15, 15% of an officer on the road with their overtime and cost for that, so, again, not saying these are things we have to do, I'm just saying, these are just ideas that we had discussed. Making more, officers more reactive, uh, instead of proactive, we have a fairly proactive, there's some percentage that Chief can probably tell me, but, um, we're very proact, we're fairly proactive at this time, so we're gonna have to move to a more reactive, where we're just responding to calls that we have. And reducing the types of calls for service that we're doing, we don't have a har, a high-volume call for service, there's some of those we don't have to necessarily do. We don't have to respond to non-injury accidents, we don't have to respond to shoplifting, or, you know, you know, the things you see in San Francisco, where they're cleaning out the Walgreens, we don't have to respond to that either, they don't, we don't have to either. Um, minimal, uh, providing minimal station upgrades, um, to meet the OSHA evidence requirements and other minimal requirements that we need today for our officers, not 20 years in the future, but do what we can, um, for today. And, uh, I did want to look at, initiate, go ahead and initiating the plan of moving the utility billing, because I think we have the space for that, we can fund that, because it is a utility project, we can fund most of that, and then, um, figure out a way to, to fund that, and then that would leave at least some space for the officers. You could put, there's probably some, you could put 4G in there, you could put somebody, you could put something in the utility billing office, um, for the police that would help out a little bit on the current scope. And then work with Jimmy on a timeline, um, Jimmy and staff on timeline of when we're gonna present each one of these things. We can present these in the next few months, um, kind of try to get through the budget part, and then start to have these wound up and ready to present to us, um, to review as we move forward. Questions or thoughts, considerations? Brian, you're an idiot, all of that was the dumbest idea I've ever heard, I'll accept that as well. We've done an amazing job over the last 10 years while I've been up here, making do with what we had, and we'll continue to do that. But we probably need to, we're gonna have to focus, because we used to have that, that percentage used to be 89%, and which allowed us money to save, um, to redo the parks and other, and do economic development projects that we've done in the past. Um, now we're at 99, and we don't have, there's no more give, so we gotta figure out, how do you create a little bit of space to add officers that we need on the street, and to be able to meet the minimal needs of everything else? And still do it in a professional NICSa expected manner. I'll send this around to everybody, too. Okay, any questions? Questions from staff? Understand? Where all the money's moved, and then, I don't know if we had, did we have, uh, an idea on the utility?
As far as cost?
As far as cost of what the, what the move was?
Yeah, we do not have that yet.
Okay, so we'll have to do that as a budget amendment probably in the future, if we get a plan in place for that.
Yeah, so that, that is something that we can consider, um, you know, and we have some funds available through utility billing, or we also have ARPA funds available that could assist in that type of, uh, move or remodel, or, or, you know, whether it be at the utility building, because, um, again, that, that utility building, if the police department were to take that over, and of course, I've already visited with you, there's a lot of logistical concerns and issues there. Um, it's more than just taking a few people over there to that building, it's, it's, it's gonna be much more complicated than that. Um, but we do have, you know, ARPA funds that could potentially, uh, be utilized for that remodel of that building, uh, as well. So we do have some options there that we could, that council could consider. So, we do have some options there that we could, that council could consider. Obviously, I've, I've said it before, throughout this last tax initiative, the city of NICSa is at a tipping point, and I've said that multiple times in several presentations that we give, and so we do have to make some difficult decisions moving forward. And what those are, obviously, we'll be working closely with staff and with council to make sure that we're trying to make the best decisions that we can for our community. So, again, with this direction, we will work on some numbers and, and see what that might look like, but again, we're soliciting input from all of the mayor and all of council as we move forward, to try to find the best solution.
All right. And I think that's it. Mr. Peterson?
Community Foundation.
Oh, that's just an informational item?
Okay.
We got it. We applied for grants. Ask Mr. Peterson.
Yep. Before we, before we move on, just a couple of staff announcements.
Oh, sorry, yes, I didn't.
That's okay. I just want to mention a couple of things. One, we are doing a Thanksgiving lunch for the employees on the 23rd, so leadership and council, we are asking that we're, we're trying to do that for the employees, so everyone's welcome. I will be come, come and go, because we're not closing offices for that, so it'll be at their lunch, lunch break, they'll be kind of making their way over here, and, and rotating out with their employees, so we'd like to do that for the employees, and if you would like to participate in that, please get with Becca, hopefully tonight, so we're running out of time. Tonight would be good. That's right. So, and then, secondly, I don't think we've made the official announcement at the city council meeting, but Scott Gobby has been promoted to the planning and development director, so I wanted to say publicly, congratulations to him as well. We look forward to looking into it.
Anything else from staff? Anything else from council? All right, now, Mr. Peterson.
I move that city council go into closed session under section 610-021-3 and 13 of RSMO, so that the council may discuss the hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of an employee, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to the employee. I also move that the closed session, records related thereto, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under section 610-021 RSMO, that the city council, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Jared Giddens?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Joleon Graham?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Seth Baylock?
Yes.